Good evening and welcome. My name is Kate Jones. I am the president of the League of Women Voters of Frederick County. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan group. We encourage informed and active participation at all levels of government. We strive to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and we influence public policy through education and advocacy. Today, we have the candidate for district, for Frederick City District Two of the city council. Please welcome Cesar Diaz. Our moderator tonight, today, is Nanette Hobson, who is the second vice president of the League of Women Voters and today's moderator. Thank you, Nanette, for doing this, and I turn it over to you.
Thank you, Kate. Cesar Diaz is a community activist who also has a job in information technology. And as you said, he is running unopposed for the second district council seat in the city. Our goal is to give voters of the second district an opportunity to meet Mr. Diaz and hear his views. We will start with an opening statement, and we'll give him two minutes to do so. And then afterwards, I'll begin to ask questions when, where we will allow up to two minutes for each answer. When we're done, Mr. Diaz will have another two minutes to close the program. So let's begin. Mr. Diaz, your statement.
Good afternoon, and thank you to the league for this forum. And Ms. Hobson, thank you for moderating. Like I said, I am, my name is Cesar Diaz. I'm running for District Two for the Frederick City Council. I've lived in Frederick since 1997. I've raised two kids to adulthood here in the county. And I'm currently with my girlfriend, we're raising my sixteen, almost sixteen-year-old stepson. I've lived in, I figured out after the districts were set up, I've lived in every district except District Three. So I'm pretty familiar with every part of the, of the city. And I can truly say that I, I love this city. I get asked a lot, if I grew up here, if I was born here, and I, and I didn't. I wasn't born here, I didn't grow up here. But like I said, I made sure my kids grew up here because this is a great, a great place to live and a great place to raise your families. As I've become familiar with the city and then I've lived here, I've, I've been involved with a lot of different groups with my kids and scouts, with Unitarian Universal's Congregation of Frederick in the area, and with a lot of community groups here in District Two and throughout the city. And I'm running to represent District Two to make sure that the residents of the second district of the city have a voice that has ties to the community, that has a lot in common with the people in the community, and that is willing to listen and represent them in the city council.
Thank you very much. So what do you think the top issues are facing people in the second district?
I think there's a couple, one of them which is pretty common to the entire city, and one that comes up in every forum and every conversation that I have is affordability, especially around housing. Housing costs continue to increase, especially around rental costs, in a lot of cases faster than people's incomes do. I'm a renter, and I've been a renter the entire time that I've lived in Frederick. So I know what that's like. I know what it's like to be forced to move for whatever circumstances and hoping that you can find a place that the rent is comparable to where you are. And I know what it's like to be reaching the end of a lease and hoping that when your landlord decides to renew your lease, that they don't raise the rent at a rate higher than maybe your income has come up. So that's an important one, and that's an issue that needs to be addressed. Another one in this area is traffic and walkability. If you're familiar, so District Two encompasses the Golden Mile and then areas south of that. So it is the densest population in, in the city of all the districts. If you look at the map, you can see that it's the smallest area because they divided them equally sort of, you know, by population. So there's a lot of people here. We're all driving down the Golden Mile, and traffic is, is an issue. And then along with that comes the alternative to traffic, which is things like buses, bike lanes, but also walkability. The city prides itself in trying to become a walkable city. It's a little bit more than just having a sidewalk in front of a residential area or even a retail or commercial area. It's the quality of that walking path and also like where you're going to. So those are two, two big issues. And a third one is services to this area.
Okay, well, we were gonna talk, I was gonna ask you about housing a little later, but since you brought it up, we'll, we'll just go ahead and launch into the issue of affordable housing. It's a big one for everybody in the city. Do you think that eliminating the in lieu of fee for developers is, is the answer to getting more affordable housing?
Well, I don't think that there's an answer to that issue. I think it's a pretty complex one. But fee and lose is definitely one that needs to be looked at seriously. If you have the ability to get out of a requirement and you're finding that developers are always taking that out, to me, that's a sign that that fee in lieu is too low. It's so much easier and cheaper for developers to pay that fee than to build affordable housing. So I think the first step, and there's many that we need to take, to look at how we can tackle the problem of affordable housing is to look at that fee and loop. I don't know necessarily getting rid of it is the best answer, but I think we need to look at it because it seems to me that it needs to be raised. And that's just a factor of, or the reason I think that it's because of being used so quickly. But if we collect it, if we raise it, then how are we using it? That money is supposed to go to help people find affordable housing, to help increase the supply. So I think we need to do two things. We need to look at the amount. And then I think we need to look at how we use the funds that are collected from it if we decide to keep it, but raise it to a level that will provide actual assistance.
And what do, you mentioned that was the first step was to evaluate this. What are the next steps then to making housing in Frederick, especially in your district, more affordable or at least within financial reach of its residents?
Another policy that I think the city needs to look at, and it's a policy that's worked in other jurisdictions, is rent stabilization. I mentioned before, one thing that you deal with when you're a renter is, is your rent gonna keep going up? And I, I'm not talking about rent control where we tell people what they can charge initially for rent, but putting some guardrails around how much rent can go up. A lot of jurisdictions in the area and across the country have implemented policies like this where the amount that a rent can go up is tied to different indexes, the cost of living, inflation, different ones that are used. At the same time, we don't want to disincentivize developers from building low-income housing or low-cost housing. So we wanna make sure we put some guardrails around that. One way that that's been addressed is by exempting new construction from those policies so that developers are not, like I said, disincentivized from building housing that can be provided at more reasonable rates. Also, we need to look, that's one step. Another one is zoning reform. How can we provide zoning so that we can build more affordable housing, more starter homes instead of larger homes that will come with a larger starting price? Because it is not just renters that are being affected by it. Home purchasing prices are also being affected. We can't control interest rates at the city council level. We can't control banking or the financial system, but we can provide for more areas to build starter homes that will get, there'll be more entry level and allow for homeownership at a lower rate.
You've already mentioned that the Golden Mile is in your district, and you've been here a long time. I'm a native too, you know, there's been a lot of talk for many, many years about improvements along the Golden Mile, including the Frederick Town Mall. So what do you think needs to be done, in your view, to make it more pedestrian-friendly and, and perhaps even get it back to the economic center that it once was?
Well, as far as the walkability, if you, if you drive or try to walk down the Golden Mile, it's not very pleasant, especially in the middle of summer when it's really hot. A lot of the development in, in that corridor has been there for a long time. So before a lot of newer requirements were put in, into place. So there's very little tree cover, very little areas that are sheltered that make it more welcoming for, for walkers. So I think that's something that we need to look at. How can we improve the landscaping and the tree cover? Maybe a bus shelters, things like that, that will make the area more attractive to walking from one place to another. It's, it's not very pleasant right now to try to walk down, to walk down the Golden Mile. As far as returning the area to where it used to be, there is a lot of, there are a lot of banquet retail spots in, on the, around the Golden Mile. A couple of big ones, of course, everybody's familiar with, with the mall, where Joanne's just moved out, that's a big empty spot. Big Lots is another big lot. And there's a lot of other small places. I was really glad to see there's a new French-Korean bakery coming into one of a, one of the empty spaces. So that's kind of exciting. I think the city needs to take advantage of some of those spaces and work with property owners and leasing companies and then members of the community who might be looking to start businesses. And how can we, as a city, improve some of those spaces to eliminate some of the startup costs that businesses face in rehabbing places that maybe have been empty for a long time or are targeted for a different type of business? And I also mentioned lack of services. Some of those places could be used to provide city services to the residents.
This primary election will have only one ballot, allowing only Democrats to vote. Republicans and independent voters won't get a chance to weigh in until the general election in November. How do you feel about that?
I think the city needs to look at changing the primary system. I've been, I'm someone who has generally been opposed to open primaries. I've always felt, well, if you're a member, if you wanna say it to who a party nominates, then register with that party. But as I've reconsidered over the last couple of elections, and especially now that I've been involved directly in this, in this election, I think at the local level, at the municipal level, it's time to look at opening up those primaries. It's a much smaller voter base, which means then a much smaller group of people get to influence who gets elected. And if you look at the current slate of candidates, some of the races will be decided during the primary just because there's not a member from, of the other party running. So I think that is something that the city needs to look at. There's a couple of different options that have been floated, just playing open primaries, allowing people from Party A to, or independents, excuse me, to pick one or the other party, like, oh, I'm gonna vote, use a Democratic ballot or Republican ballot. There's a large number of unaffiliated voters in Frederick. They don't get to say, they basically don't get a vote in the election when the primary is what's going to decide a specific race. So I think it is something that the city needs to look at to open up the voter base.
Let's talk about policing a little bit. Does, does District Two have a crime problem?
No, no. Crime, crime gets the attention, but living here, talking to people here, there's not a serious crime problem in this area, no.
As you know, the Frederick City Police have a policy of not inquiring about immigration status when they are engaged with citizens, even if they are arrested. You also know that the Sheriff's Department has a different policy. And if you are arrested and taken to jail, the jail is in the sheriff's jurisdiction. How do you feel about that disparity? And what do you think, if, if anything, should be done?
That's a, that's a big issue in, in this area. And I think it's a big issue for all of Frederick, all of Frederick County, and for the state. I've been very, very active in working against 287G. We could talk for hours about that, but basically, I don't think it helps public safety. I think it targets people for minor offenses, and I think it's very disruptive to the community. As far as the difference between the Sheriff's Department and the city, I'm glad to know that the city's not actively pursuing immigration cases. The Sheriff's Department says the same thing. They're not enforcing immigration laws while they're patrolling, but they are enforcing immigration laws or working with ICE when people end up at jail. And so it's the Sheriff's Department, and so is every other jurisdiction in Frederick County because we only have one jail. So how do we solve that conflict? Well, to me, the easiest way is just to work to eliminate 287G. I was part of one of many groups that tried to work for that at the last General Assembly at the state level. We didn't get the result that we wanted. We're not giving up. If we follow the examples of other states that have eliminated and have just by law not permitted those 287G agreements between Sheriff's Departments and immigration, then we get rid of that problem.
How do you think the, the state's budget deficit and the federal government cutbacks will impact Frederick's budget and finances? And what specific strategies would you use to try to minimize those impacts?
How they're gonna impact it is, remains to be seen specifically. I think it's definitely going to impact it. There's, there's no doubt about it. We just not haven't, we were starting to see some of the state effects and slowly starting to see some of the federal effects, especially around grants. There's a lot of nonprofit groups, specifically ones that work in District Two, who have had to cut back on some of their programs because of funding problems. I was glad to see that the last budget that was passed by the city had a set amount of money set aside for helping nonprofit groups that would be, that might be impacted by some of these cuts in funding. So I think that's a great first step. I think the next step for that, and by the time we get to budget season again, I strongly feel that we're going to already be seeing a lot more impact. I think we need to sit down with those groups and come up with some, as accurate as possible worst-case scenario numbers as to what they feel they're gonna be impacted, what program changes that they're gonna have to make. And then at budget season, look at how the city can directly budget for those programs of assistance or in some cases, look at how the city can maybe fill in those gaps just as the direct service itself. Those cuts are coming, the impact is gonna be significant. I don't think we know what they are yet. I think the city has taken some steps to start to get ready, and I think that's great. And I think the next step that we need to do is just look more closely and see if we can analyze exactly what, or more closely what that impact is going to be and plan for it.
As a new council member, what would be your legislative priorities?
One of my first priorities is, and it touches on affordable housing as well, is reviewing the Land Management Code. Development is one of the hottest topics in any conversation you have about Frederick. And how development happens is guided by the Land Management Code. So just like the city recently, you know, resulted in the new form of government by reviewing the charter and redoing the, the city charter, I think it's time that we analyze the Land Management Code. But what I would like to see, it's not something that you can rush. It's a very complicated process, it's a very impactful code. But we also don't wanna wait forever until we start seeing some of the benefits. So what I would like to see is the former group, just like they did for the charter, that will analyze that code, bring in a lot of the stakeholders, and give them a mandate to have them come up with a number, and I, I don't wanna pick a number, but a number of changes that they feel can be implemented quickly, that they quickly agree on. These are things that we're going to definitely wanna do. Bring that to the council so we can start considering those while they analyze the rest of the Land Management Code and finalize that. That way, we can have an impact because development touches so many parts of our, of our life. Traffic, infrastructure, housing, schools, almost everything. So I think that's definitely the, the first thing that I think we should look at. And then from there, I think we're gonna look at other things that trickle down from that. Affordable housing, how we manage zoning, sustainability. So those are, those will be my priorities.
Speaking of development, there are two big projects that are already being, well, one that's being brought before the council more immediately, and that's the cricket stadium. The other is the idea of having a second hospital along Monocacy Boulevard. How do you feel about those projects? Let's start with the cricket stadium because that's going to be, coming to a vote pretty soon, I think.
Yeah, the cricket stadium is an interesting conflict between some economic development, use of that land or a rezoning question for that land that's being annexed, and then what it means to the city as far as infrastructure. I like the idea of something going on, going in at that property that isn't a super huge box store with a big parking lot with, you know, hardly any trees and no tree cover and, you know, non-porous surfaces, all that kind of stuff near the Monocacy. So I like something that isn't that. Twenty-five thousand people-capacity stadium is not exactly what I think is beneficial for the city. People keep saying, oh, this is the cricket stadium, the cricket stadium, every conversation that I, that I have, and, and it's true. But to me, it's bigger than just a cricket stadium because the cricket team says, oh, we're gonna have five thousand people for cricket games. Okay, that's one problem. But then they also say in the, in the next sentence, we're gonna build for a capacity of twenty-five thousand people. That's a whole different problem. So I think we need to look at that level, right? If we approve the zoning and if we approve that stadium with that maximum capacity, then that's the capacity that we need to plan for, not the, oh, we're mostly gonna use it for five thousand people. So I, I don't want a Walmart there, which was a, a project that had been looked at in that area. But I don't know that I want five thousand or twenty-five thousand people getting on buses or driving all over Frederick City and Frederick County and in some of the plans that they've mentioned, driving all the way to Tyson's Corner to that part of town. So I, I think it definitely needs a lot more analysis and a lot more, looking at it more closely. And I'm out of time to get to the-
I know you're out of time, but, but, but we'll, we'll extend just to hear what you have to say about the hospital proposal.
Yeah, the, the hospital property there off of Monocacy Boulevard, I definitely think that we need more medical facilities and more medical services. I, I agree with the decision of the Planning Commission to reject the plan that was submitted based on the fact that I believe it was, out of eighteen intersections, seven of them failed capacity tests. That's almost half, that's unacceptable. Try to drive down Monocacy, try to go down to the Walmart there or try to come from like the northern part of town into the, into, you know, out of that neighborhood. The traffic is already bad. So I agree with the Planning Commission in rejecting that plan because of that. They're not, it's, it's not being eliminated, it's not, they weren't told, you know, pack up your bags and go home. They were told to go back to the drawing board and design and fix those issues. And I think that was the right decision.
Um, how would you work with the county and state governments to further Frederick's initiatives?
I think we need to expand or improve our relationship, especially at the county level. I hear a lot, as I've been campaigning, as I've been talking to folks, not only here in District Two, but around the city, concerns about transit, traffic, and schools. And those are county issues or state issues. Like fifteen is a state road, forty is a state road. We have county roads, city roads. The transit system is a county system, and the schools are county schools. All the residents of the city, all the residents of District Two, also are residents of the county. So saying, oh, that's a county issue and let them take care of it, to me, is, is not my, that's not doing my job. I can't tell the county council what to do. But I can ask them, I can advocate, I can be a strong advocate for the city and for District Two for the things that we need, that the county has to provide. If we, if the county can't, then the city can maybe look at where they can fill in some of those gaps so that we can provide the services that, that folks need. That we need small shuttle buses where they can have extra transit, those, you know, things like that. Can we provide after-school programs where the school system can't? Work a little bit more closely, find out where those gaps are. Advocate to fill those gaps and then see what we have to do it. And I think we can do the same thing at the state level.
Last question. What does Frederick look like in five years?
Um, I'd like to think that, that we look like a city with a lot more trees. Tree cover is, is important in so many ways. And I think it's also part of what people look down on development. Development's going to happen. We talked about a portable housing, and out of all those solutions, one that's gonna solve it or help alleviate it is supply. So we need to have, development's going to happen. So I'd like to see development be more environmentally conscious, but also help build a sense of community. And I think green space does that a lot. I'd like to see a lot less cars on the road by improving our transit systems. And I'd like to see, and I think the district concept in our, in our government will hopefully help with this, is that I'd like to see a better sense of community. I mentioned earlier how District Two is the densest populated. If you look at the map, just by looking at it, you can see that it's the smallest in area because of that. But people who live on one side of, at the further west side, you know, and go, maybe go shopping at Megamart or Vice, might not ever even run into people who live around here, where I live at Hillcrest, who go to Aldi or H Bar. They might not even run into each other at the grocery store. But we are part of the same district, and we are part of the same community. You've driving on the same roads, that kind of thing. So I think building a better sense of community. I've heard some people criticize the district model because they feel it's gonna divide the city up, and then they're not gonna have this concept. But I disagree. I think bringing that sense of community in the districts and then widening them out will, will make Frederick a much better place.
Thank you so much, Cesar Diaz. It's been a pleasure discussing with you. And now we'll wrap things up with Kate. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't give you a chance to do your closing statement. I apologize. We were talking about your vision, and you still get two more, because I, I was, so please, you begin your closing statement, you have two minutes.
Um, well, I think, I think that was a, a good way to close my vision for, for Frederick. You know, if I'm fortunate enough to serve, and I am running unopposed, but I don't like to say when, I'd like to say if. If I serve, because I still want to reach out to the voters of District Two and earn their vote, five years will be beyond when, when I would serve a term, and that's as far as I'm thinking. But in five years, I would like to see those things improving in Frederick, and I think we can do it. I, I said this in a forum last night, that it sounds kind of cheesy and kind of corny, but I really do love this town. I chose to live here, I chose to raise my family and continue to raise my family here. I'd like to build on those things. There are some things in Frederick that need to be improved, absolutely. It's not, no, nothing is perfect, but I like the, the optimism that I've felt among the candidates. I've been very fortunate to work with a great group of, alongside a great group of candidates, and I feel that optimism, and I'd like to carry that for, for, for the next four years so that then it can carry on for other councils in five, in eight years, twelve years. I can't multiply that fast and forward. So thank you again for, for the, for this forum, and thank you for the great questions.
Thank you. Yeah, you're muted, okay.
Additional election and candidate information is available in the Voters' Guides created jointly by the Frederick News Post and the League of Women Voters of Frederick County. The guides include information about where, when, and how to vote as well as candidate answers to policy questions. The Frederick News Post will distribute the English-language guide to its hard copy and digital subscribers in the August sixteenth to seventeenth edition of the paper. The League will make hard copies of the English and Spanish guides available at Seber Arts Library, Centro Hispano of Frederick, the Asian-American Center of Frederick, and Senior- Centro Hispano of Frederick, the Asian American Center of Frederick, and senior living centers throughout the city, including. The Tony Av- Tony Village Apartments, the Frederick Senior Center on Tony Avenue and Homewood. But we are also making links available to those guides on our website and on our. Social media pages, including Facebook primarily. Thank you for being here, and for those online, thank you for watching. A video recording of this event will be available on YouTube. You can find the link on our website at LWV.org. But also add to your search the words Frederick County, so that you get to the right website. Please remember to vote in the primary. Early voting takes place August twenty-second and twenty-third. And Primary Election Day is September ninth. And let me say, we will be doing more forums and another Voters' Guide right before the general election in November. It might not be as broad, because we'll have fewer candidates, but it is going to be produced. Thank you very much for joining us.